Okay. I would like to officially call this meeting to order at 5:04 PM. With myself being present, I'll officially take the call. Cheryl Kessel.
Here.
Ben Kramer.
Sure.
Jeremy Muichio.
Here.
Becky Kett.
Here.
Rosben, Robin Asman Stan.
Here.
I'm gonna get better, I promise. Alright, first item is general public comment. This is the time of the public may give comment of a general nature. No official action may be taken by the commission during this time. Listen to direct staff to look into a matter. Public comments are limited to five minutes. If you're watching online, I'd like to make a public comment. Please send a chat message to the host in Zoom. Would like, and would anyone like to make a general public comment on that item that's not on the agenda? Okay. Any chats? Alright, so moving on forward into reports of Parks and Recreation Manager will provide an update on the following items.
Okay. Alright. A couple of things I wanted to tell you about upcoming events. We have the Jim and Mineral Show coming to the auditorium. Park Memorial Clubhouse Auditorium on 2/22 through 2/25. It's a Friday through Sunday. And we'll be promoting that up to the school as well. Because it's a really great free family event for kids to come. We have the Car Show, the Downtown Business Alliance sponsors the Clarkdale Car Show on March 11th. And the Historical Society and Museum sponsors the plant sale on 3/18. And that will be out here in the town parking lot. The, I want to give you some updates. Copper Penny Park Pickleball. Went to update you on what's going on there. We did have a meeting with the developer and with his contractor, as well as our Public Works team, to look at the pickleball area and determine how we're gonna fix it. And we came up with a couple of different ideas. One of them, in particular, the least expensive thing for us to do is find a bonding agent that will bond with the material, the rock material, to create a harder surface so the rocks aren't sliding out and bring that surface right up to the sidewalk. And so that card there, the cross-reference contractor is looking into that to give us an idea on what we can, what we can use. And then if we can't find that product or that product doesn't work, then we're gonna look at concrete, particularly on the east side of the park. And, and then we're also looking at a fence to go up so the balls aren't rolling down into the rip rap. So we learned, I think I already reported to you, that we can't, we can't build the concrete out very far. So we're not gonna be able to go as far as we should if we do do concrete because of the rap, the rip rap ditch in the, in the... The water needs to be able to run into that ditch. And if we level it up too much, then that's not gonna happen. So, so they are looking into that. And as soon as they get back to us, then we'll come up with a plan to go forward. They have offered to do, if we purchase all the materials needed for the project, then they will provide the labor to do the work. So that'll save us, usually labor is a lot more than the, than the materials. So, working on that. Any questions about that? Has anybody had any more comments about the pickleball court? We haven't had any in a while. The Verde River at Clarkdale, the permits for the outfitters are being produced right now. Two of them, one of them is asked for an extension due to the fact that he may be losing his place of business location and is trying to secure another location. So we're holding off on his permit until such time as he gets that underway. And an update on the Tapco surfacing. Public Works let me know today that, that will be done by the first of March. They're waiting, they have to get one more bid before they can move forward. So they've got already everything waiting to go, they just have to get... What's that, what's that? Yeah, that was... They wanna get it done before the season starts and it gets busy out there. Caviar Park updates. Bids are due tomorrow. We will be doing the bid opening process at four o'clock tomorrow to see who got the lowest bid. So we'll be reading the bids, our town clerk will be doing that process. We've had, so just to give you a little idea, we've had some challenges with the, with the drainage at the park. When we had the contractors here, they went out and let us know that they felt like the drainage wasn't gonna be good enough. So we brought in a, an unofficial engineer, who was, was a certified engineer at one point. So she knows her stuff to look at it and give us an opinion, not, or some suggestions, not an opinion. And with that, we determined that we probably need to add more drainage. So we had to change the bid, we did a bid addendum for the project. Unfortunately, because of the cost to do that, it's going to cut down on the fun stuff with the park. And we've heard from at least two of the bid, the contractor or the companies that are going to bid, their disappointment in that. And I've shared that we have the same, we share that disappointment. But we've gotta build the park right and we gotta make sure that it's sustainable. We're not gonna lose all the material out the first time we have a flood. So they've been asked to bid just as the project was put out to them. And if they have some additional ideas, they can include that as, as an addendum. So we'll see what we get. But it's gonna be tricky and we may, you know, if the drainage is gonna continue to be a problem for us with the cost, then we may need to look at securing additional grant money to, to help cover that piece. But unfortunately, we can't build the park without the drainage. It's not something we can do after, it needs to be done during that time. So we're just in a tricky spot. Just wanted to get you to speed. And we'll keep you posted on that. Any questions? The concerts in the park? We have more than 40 bands that have applied. Ms. Kessel, would you like to update everybody on that?
Well, did they owe the two applications to me today? It's two that we asked to do.
I think one of them did.
We only had 39 yesterday and then we sent those two back to get their application that we could open.
Okay.
But, you know, we met, we weeded out several, I think we're down to 24. And then we'll meet next week and make some decisions.
Yep. Some good, some good bands. And I did go to the Clarkdale Downtown Business Alliance meeting this week and let them know our, our performance dates. And so they're not having their conversation about what to do about their block parties until their next meeting. So that's still not been decided. And then Sonamangini, our grant has finally been submitted to National Parks. So as far as we know, everything is good to go. It's been vetted by the director, who goes over every little detail before it gets submitted. And it's in, it's into National Parks now. And we should know in two, two, two to three months. Is that what he said, two to three? How, of our award?
Basically, a done deal?
That's the way they make it sound, but nothing's a done deal until they say it's a done deal. We don't trust any disappointment. And that is all I have in reports.
Okay. So then the next item is minutes where we will vote to approve the items. If anybody would like to discuss, discuss this item. And if not, do I hear a motion on the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on January 11th, 2023, as written.
Second, although the favor. Right. Alright. This is item number six, discussion items only. Starting off with item 6A, which is a Trails Master Plan, which will be a discussion only regarding the selection of a Trails Master Plan vendor.
Just... Alrighty. So this is our Trails Master Plan. Can you pull up the, yeah, there you go. So tonight, huh? Is it working? I don't know. We checked every other little thing. I got the pointer. I'm not sure where the pointer is. Okay, alright. Well, as we stated in your packet, we've been going through the process of selecting a company to do, to produce a Trails Master Plan for us. And we threw, we'll go ahead and switch the, switch that, because that's probably gonna help me. I didn't realize when I put that stuff up there that I wouldn't be able to read. I'll have to turn my back to you a little bit. Okay, so why are we working on a Trails Master Plan? To, first of all, our public said we wanna see more trails in Clarkdale. So, and we only have a few trails that we can call Clarkdale Trails. And then there are been many trails proposed, but we don't know, we don't really have a good guide on how to move forward with developing those trails, to, to creating and developing those trails. So, and, and even identifying some of them as being valid trails. There's a lot involved in it. And so we, you know, and so we've had this conversation with you all before. But, but definitely, we need a master plan to guide us into the future of trails. So, yeah. Thanks. So then it was, how are we gonna choose this? And before I go any further, for those of you who don't know, I'd like to introduce Felicia Coats, who is our star volunteer. I mean, you're all great volunteers, don't get me wrong. But Felicia puts in a huge amount of time. She helped us do the Sonamangini Grant, the Caviaro Grant. And, but her main passion is trails. And so she's also taking a lead on working through this. So she's been hugely helpful in kind of vetting, finding companies, getting input from others on who, who we might wanna use. And then calling those companies, having conversations with them, kind of deciding from that, narrowing it down to three companies. And then we had interviews, pretty extensive interviews with, with two of the companies via Zoom and really got to the nitty gritty of what they would be able to potentially provide for us. And we've also wanted to get a feel for a company we felt also would be a good fit for Clarkdale. And it was, quite honestly, either company would have been great. They could have done the job. There were just a few little things that, that drove us to one, to looking at one a little more in depth. Thank you. So... We gave them the Trails Master Plan objectives and criteria, being that we need something to serve as a guide and implementation tool to move forward and including management and maintenance of trails and then to meet the recreational needs of the community. And the Trails Master Plan criteria separately, to address community interest, to increase trail opportunities, to accommodate a variety of trail users and, and being sensitive to the environment, to provide equitable and inclusive access to trails, to site trails in areas highlighting Clarkdale's cultural and, culture and history, provide connectivity, which we talked a huge amount about, to surrounding communities and forest land and promoting Clarkdale sustainability. So those were the, the elements that we gave them to say, this is kind of what we're thinking, what can you do for us? So the strengths of the top company, after reviewing all of their information, and we'll go through some of that end of the stuff. The enthusiasm, so these, these were the things that stood out to us for them, from them. Enthusiasm for working with the town on this project. They don't just take any projects. These people are very choosy, because they can be, they're very choosy about the projects that they get involved in. And they are really excited about this project. And, and it was evident to us, they're excited. Their, their experience of working with federal entities and managing municipality interface with the entities was huge, that they understand working with municipalities can, can be challenging. And, and then they, they had a really apparent vision about what trails can be and including multipurpose corridors and thinking about economics, economic development along with that. They have 20 years in the business, they have an office and flight staff. They have done the history, they have a history of developing trails in small towns, including towns with mining histories. So we thought that was really important. Deliverables for this fiscal year were comparable to others. And they have an all, it doesn't say all the card, it says upper part of the law card. But they have an a la carte menu. So we could really, once they presented us with the, the cost, we could say, well, you know, we don't see this, we really want to do this. And they're like, okay, well, that's gonna cost this amount. So we'll find something within here that we can remove and put into the phase two or whatever. So it really made it easy. And I think it'll only get easier as we're going through as well. It was really helpful for our budgeting. And then they have very experienced team members. They, they had a huge team that mapped us, spanning from planning to execution. They've worked DNEPA, which is the, oh my gosh, just look at me. The National Environmental Protection Agency. Thank you. They, that do, we have to have those studies done on all properties that get developed for trails. So that's usually one of the big holdups. And we hear a lot about this in meetings, pretty front meetings with the Forest Service, that they're getting their DNEPA studies done, it takes a long time for that. So this is what they presented to us after, this was, so we met with them. We said, we like what you have. We have a few tweaks we'd like you to consider. And so this was the final kind of phased approach that they sent us. And so, and this is very brief. What I'm gonna do, and I'm gonna mention it right now so I don't forget, I have a document for you to take with you today. And, and I'll tell you more about why I need to do that. But don't forget, it's on the counter, you're on that desk. Because this is very abbreviated, this document, it has more detail in it. So they started with, so in phase one, which is really all we have money for right now. It's $40,000 to do phase one. And this is what we're gonna get for phase one. They started with the foundation, which would begin February, which would take place February, February through March. That might get pushed out just a little bit. To do a kickoff meeting, coordinate monthly calls, review existing plans and gather existing GIS data, create existing conditions and constraints mapping, and create preliminary document outline. So they're doing all this for us, which is really nice. Next. Thanks. The task two that will take, take place through April is conducting a site tour. So they're gonna come and get boots on the ground, look at what we've got available after they've had a chance to see all the maps. They'll summarize, conduct and summarize input from focus groups. Those focus groups could include planning and trail staff from public land managers, adjacent communities, Clarkdale, Deva County, key volunteers, partners, resource and user interest groups, landowners, large landowners, and boards and commissions. So they're responsible for, we, we kind of give them the names and they get everybody together and have the conversations and they'll do a lot of those through Zoom. We'll have an opportunities open house so that once they kind of start getting all the pieces together, the public can come and talk, tell it, talk more about what their, what their interests are. And then creating a opportunities map to begin the potential connections and keeping in mind bicycle, pedestrian, equestrian, ADA, trailheads and recreation sites. Then the third task will be May through June, preliminary recommendations. They will, they, I think I left that off of the other, but they continually have monthly calls and then the email weekly, weekly correspondence. So what they wanna do is develop the trail standards, the technologies, and preliminary concept Trails Master Plan map. They'll review the Parks and Recreation Commission review with you, sorry, virtually for input. So they'll do presentation. And they will also conduct a public open house in tandem with an online, a public online survey. So we asked for that, that was something they did not have included and we thought that that was important. Even though we have our 2020 survey, it was, it was very broad. It was 2020. And so we wanna be sure that we kind of scale that down to some detail of what the public is looking for in, in trail use in Clarkdale. And then fourthly, in July, the, that was a, that's four. Monthly coordination calls again, final concept Trails Master Plan. They'll revise the conceptual Trails Master Plan from the public comments and finalize the plan. They'll have it available for online public review. They'll present to Parks and Rec Commission. And then once you all have approved or feel like it's ready to move on to council, I will go up to council for, for approval. So that's what we get in for 40,000 publics. It doesn't sound like much, but when you look at the details within each of those categories, it's, it's a lot. It's a very standard cost as we went through the different, as Felicia was doing the different interviews with different organizations. So then we said, okay, what, what aren't we getting for $40,000? And so we have that phase two approach. We will be presenting this to council because it's going to need more money in the budget. For $32,000 will be this final piece in addition to the 40 that we will pay. Okay? So I want you to think about that as we're going through this. And if you have questions or concerns, we, you know, we wanna have those conversations. So phase two is the implementation. They will review with staff the current capital funding projects, funding sources in our budget to see where we can, where we can come up with funds to be able to actually implement some trail planning. They'll give us an implementation action plan. And these, these again are very detailed and, or more detailed than the document you're gonna be getting. And they will prioritize trail, different trail segments and the uses. They will help us with all with that piece. In addition, they will do ground truth trail alignment. So that means boots on the ground, really walking the trails. Where can the trailhead be? How could we do this? And they'll develop that. I think they set for three different trail, larger trail plans, trailheads. They'll do an acquisition plan, a maintenance plan, recreation, transeconomic impact, quantify the economic benefits and the return on the investment. That's really huge because that's where council is gonna see the benefit to continue to fund trails if we need to or to support the, the acquisition of properties or grants to be able to build the, build the trails, because they have to approve that. They'll do a detailed trailhead parking concept. The master plan will contain standards for all trails, but not size specific drawings for trailhead or interpretive improvement. So they're talking about the master plan in the beginning. And they'll draft concepts for three trailheads that could be used for fundraising. So with that, we have a document that we can go out and, you know, that we've got something solid to do that fundraising, to provide for our grants. And that's important. And then a wayfinding map, wayfinding signs. They won't develop the signs because we already have it, we're known that the Verde Fund branding and is, is what we're interested in continuing because it's a regional branding. And then they will create, yeah, the map. A map with those, where those signs would be best placed. So, comments, ideas?
Seems very thorough. Where are they based?
They have it Flagstaff Office, but they are in...
This particular group is based in Fort Collins, Colorado.
And their price was comparable to the other final?
Yes.
So there's currently funds for the first phase, just not for the second phase?
Correct.
Okay.
So what we're doing is, because of the, the dollar amount of the funds currently and the town manager's ability to sign contracts under 75,000, we don't technically have to take this to council for approval. And we're not taking it to council really for approval. But we are taking it to council on February 14th, next Tuesday, Valentine's Day. Any of you who could attend, it would be great if... Any of you who could attend, it would be great if we at least have one, one Parks and Rec Commissioner at the meeting. We're not, we decided not to do a joint meeting. I know I put in here that we were going to do a joint meeting with them. We're actually not doing that. We're just giving them information. It was just too cumbersome to try to get it all together. So we wanted you to be the first in the loop as to what, what we're looking at doing. And so you're informed coming into the meeting on Tuesday, if you can make that, I know it's really last minute notice, but if you can, that would be fantastic. So I will do, be doing a presentation to council. They actually are getting, that's what I'd like you to pick up is the staff report. Their staff report is very detailed because we wanted them to have everything, so there was less less cause for questioning with them trying to read something as we're, as we're presenting it, so. So we just gave them the entire draft and I wanted you all to have that too going into the meeting. Keep in mind it is a draft, we made a few tweaks. The town clerk made a few lyrical tweaks, I believe, but and the town manager has not reviewed it yet. So, but yeah, so we'd like to move forward with this company. The reason we are not saying the name of the company is because we want to be sure that everyone else feels like they can present, that they can perform and do what it is that we're looking for. And before we inform the other company that we're not probably going to be using them. So, so we just kept it on a demo for right now, if that makes sense.
Is there a deadline to accept one or the other of these companies?
No, no, it is up to us. And one other thing I wanted to bring to your attention that we learned in conversation with them, much of the trail plan will not, you know, they're, they're, they can do more for us where natural trails and where unnatural, as in street or sidewalk trails are concerned. But they're, they're really focused on the natural trails. However, with our connecting needs to other communities, to our downtown businesses, et cetera, there's going to be a pretty good number of trails that are on streets and sidewalks. So we are hoping that our public works is, public works team is going to be doing a it's called a transportation plan that will, is it called a transportation plan?
Transportation master plan.
Thank you. Transportation master plan in order to kind of develop those trails further. They'll take it to the next step. And they really need to have one of those, so that's something that's on their radar to take. We're just going to see what kind of, you know, they, this company understands what our needs are, that we need to be connecting. We want to connect to the, to the circle trail, the Verde Valley Circle Trail. And unfortunately, right now, as that looks in kind of scoping out some different areas, we can't connect without going, we can't connect to other trails or to other communities right now without going on streets and sidewalks. And that's just the way it's going to be. But the map will be very high of the low level. Just with the outline of where they could go on those streets until Public Works takes it to the next level of what the development needs to be. Did I miss anything that we talked about?
Well, it seems like he definitely did a lot of research and a lot of work was involved in getting all this put together, so. You mentioned that staff would like to move forward and I feel like that's encouraged by all of us, even though it's just a discussion item, so.
Okay. No other questions?
That thirty-two thousand for the phase two, is there any chance that that would change throughout the planning process or is that kind of set?
You mean as in going up?
Yeah, yeah, I was curious and having to go to the council and ask for more money, is there a chance?
Yeah, so let me explain what that would look like, that phase two. By going, by bringing this to council and outlining the benefits of what we're getting in phase one. And unfortunately, I mean, really what I want is I want all that phase two, but it's a process to get there. And so we can't, you know, we gotta, we gotta take it one step at a time and unfortunately it's costly for our small town to spend that much money on a, on a trails plan. So it really has to do with the council's feeling about it and if they support that and if there's funds for them to do that. So what we will do is I wanted to, you know, get them adjusted to the fact that, you know, we're not getting everything for the, for the funds that we have currently. And if we want everything, then we're going to need to invest more. Now, whether that's in this next year or if it's in a future year, we really don't want, and we were very clear with this company, we don't want a document that's going to, that we paid forty thousand for or seventy-five or eighty thousand for sitting on our shelf and nobody ever uses it. We really need something that we can, that will guide us and we can say, okay, you know, the next step, these are our next trails that we're going to focus on. And because we've heard too often of people that get trails or that have master plans for all kinds of things and Ben, I'm sure you've experienced that as well, that you spend a boatload of money, you get a pretty plan and it sits on a shelf and nobody does anything with it. Now, I know our team and if we have a pretty plan and we have, you know, help to do it, we're going to get it out there to find the funding to get what we need because we know our town doesn't have a lot of money for this kind of. But without a comprehensive plan, it's really difficult for us to do. So that was another reason I could add to our, you know, why we, why we need to, why we need to do this. And I, you know, I'm a girl, it's not easy for me. It's been that kind of money to, to do that, but I think it's really important for us.
And it's the last E project. I mean, I think it's important. I think it's really overdue, like.
Yes.
Well, it's our number one prioritized opportunity for analysis.
Right. Yeah. So, okay. Any other questions? So, and I don't think I answered your question fully, Robin. I don't know if they, you know, they've given us a quote, if we go into the next phase with them, I don't think they're going to change that. But we do have an opportunity to do though because of their à la carte. They, they have actually broken down every fee for us and, and every step and what it's going to, what each thing costs. So just like we came back and said, we really want to survey. They said, okay, well, we'll pull this thing out for right now, we'll put it in phase two because we, you know, we went with their suggestion on that. And so because of that separate pricing, we can move things around. When we get to phase two, if we get the funding for that, then we will, then, you know, we'll see about moving through. So what or if we need all of those things, if we want all of those things. And so the process with the council, it would be, you know, we're explaining to them now that there's going to be a need for additional funds. And then when we go through our budgeting process, which is basically now, we'll be requesting funds in the capital improvement for a capital improvement project and for this specific thing. And then they weigh all of those capital improvement projects that come in from every department and they go, okay, what can we do? And, you know, what's the top priority? Is it our building crumbling building or is it a trail? And they, they have, that's their hard job to go and decide what, what's going to happen, but that's how the funding will go. Sorry, that was a long.
All right, also very thorough, a lot of coverage that you did there, so I'm looking forward to looking at that document too. So I will help remind everybody to get that hand up before they leave. Okay, anything else before we move on? All right, going on into item six B, Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan. Another discussion on the item regarding the final SWOT analysis results and determine how those elements fit into the town strategic plan and general plan related to the Parks and Recreation Parkdale.
All right, well, you guys did some really great work on this. What what I'd like to do this evening is go through, we're going to just start with one thing being the the town strategic plan and just kind of go through it step by step. I've already identified a few things that I think match up with what you have for the SWOT analysis, but we, you know, we want to have an open discussion about that and see what your thoughts are. So we're just going to go through the strategic plan briefly. Hopefully you've had some time to look at that and see what elements of the strategic plan you feel are, are not identified and what you've already created as your priorities, priorities for the next. And I mean, we can do both, we can identify those that are and, and those that may need to be added if they're, if they're not here. So to do that, we're just going to go right through the strategic plan now to the goals. So we have six goals total for the town. And the goal areas were identified, this was quite a process, so the staff and the town council went through a SWOT analysis, just like you all have gone through separately. And then all of the information was brought together, the council reviewed it again and, and identified, you know, what their important things within those subject areas were. So. Yeah, so, well, I'm going to let you guys kind of decide on this. It depends on the level of what you, homework you were able to do because all I, all I want to do is just identify that, yes, we have one section, Bull Area Three, that is all Parks and Rec. We're the only department in the town that has a whole section to ourself. So we know that we're going to talk about those things. But if you had a chance to look at some of the other areas, just note it, we've highlighted a couple of things, Shaw and I have to, to bring to your attention as well in other areas. So we thought in, in the first area, which is Preserve and Celebrate Clarkdale's unique complex, unique complex history that this number thirteen should develop an education program along the Verde River regarding its historic importance to Clarkdale. The trading route, the home to the Tsunawas, the Yavapais and Apaches. That is something that Parks and Rec would most likely be involved in. And I think that you have something
with number eight?
Are you trying to compare it to our SWOT analysis at this time? Because those, the weakness is to offer more classes. That was number five under weakness.
River education, yeah. So that does fit right in there. I'm going to make a note of the number thirteen in section one. And then there always said eight. A neighborhood revitalization plan to position the town to apply for additional CVBG funds for Patio Park. So that's, that's a, that's an economic development piece because they're doing the revitalization, the neighborhood revitalization. So we started with Caviar Park and that is definitely a piece of that. But, yeah.
That's an under strengths prioritized, number three, staff access grant funding. But you're saying that's separate because it's focused on the
So I think what the confusion is, is it says sponsor Patio Park and that is the subdivision, not the park. So, yeah, that doesn't, it doesn't really, I mean, Shaw and I both looked at it this afternoon, we're like, well, does it or doesn't it? But really it's more of beautifying, you know, helping that neighborhood get cleaned up and so I really don't, although we have something about beautification of neighborhoods through parks, including public art elements.
I still think that stays focused on the parks alone, where you said economic development is on remainder portions.
Okay. Moving along, now we have Bull Area Two, which is to enhance the quality of life for residents, businesses and visitors in Clarkdale. So when we look through these, under seek ways to grow inclusiveness in the town through work groups, public forums, focus groups, surveys and relationship building. That sort of felt like us because just doing things like having events and and we do a lot of surveys, we're going to be doing more with the trails. So, I don't know, what do you all think? And where, where would it fit if it needed to be in here?
Under weaknesses, number two, we have more public involvement.
Yep. Which creates those ways to I, I find it funny, it says grow inclusiveness. Okay.
Yeah, I feel like that fits.
Fit with that, okay. Number six, to create outreach to promote diverse board participation and volunteerism and build upon the robust board process. Wonder volunteering. So volunteering is a big piece of what we do.
That's number two on strengths prioritized.
Good. And then lastly, not, not up in the session, but number seven, actively work to keep the heart of the community, to keep the heart of the community downtown vibrant through economic development activities, code enforcement, public infrastructure, investment and maintenance. And Shaw and I kind of went back and worked on this one too, but what stuck out to me was the economic development activities, which speaks to me, to the events that that we do.
So number one, I'm straight.
Downtown vibrant through economic development activities. Vibrant through economic development activities. I don't know.
I kind of like, no, I don't know. I like ten. I don't know if you highlighted it.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, I was just wondering what, you know, that one seems to speak to us more than.
Okay, can you scroll up just a little bit? Uh, identify those.
So you want number ten, identify those.
Yes.
Or is the one that we just completed, we wanna put that. Somewhere or not, for the public infrastructure, like under parks and or under another area. Actively work to keep the heart of the community downtown vibrant. And public infrastructure, Joni, I think we talked about that, like building these parks or behaving the parts.
That's tough. I'm trying to see how that fits into parks rather.
Well, and one of the things to think about is if you don't have it and you think it's important, we can add it. As something to be prioritized as important, but that's completely up to you all.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm stuck on that one.
Okay.
So like public infrastructure, Joni, would that also include trails? Like, wouldn't we define public infrastructure as like our parks?
Sure, bike, bike paths, uh huh, sure.
Oh, under opportunity.
Other opportunities, trail connectivity. Yeah, if you use, utilize that word in that sense, that can fit into there.
Under trail connectivity.
Yes, number one on opportunities.
Is everybody? Okay.
Charm, number ten.
Okay, I can't, I mean, a lot of those could go. Events.
Yeah, quality.
Or do you feel like it needs to be a standalone by itself? Is it important enough to be a standalone by itself or would we plug it in under trails?
Certainly includes a lot more than trails.
Yeah, because it's about.
When I read that one, it's, it's making sure there's not like. Dumping in town and a bunch of extra signage, it doesn't meet code. And lights are downcast instead of upcast and it's, I don't, I. I guess I don't know. It's like sidewalks are repaired and stuff. That's what I see when I read that one. Because it's economic development activities, code enforcement, public infrastructure. I don't know that that's, I mean, I guess I just don't.
Yeah, well, when I read it again, and I keep doing this every time. Actively work to keep the heart of the community downtown. It's talking about downtown. The hopes and the seeds, the heart of the community, just saying the heart of the community is downtown. We want to keep it vibrant through economic development activities. Code enforcement, so people aren't chugging it up, public infrastructure, investment and maintenance.
I mean, when you say it like that, then I, then I would think of the park in Upper Clartle, which is very much a part of.
Or the event.
Or events.
Yeah, for the events, yeah.
Yeah.
Can we put it under events as well as trails?
Hmm.
We can be, put that under quality events as well as show connectivity, so.
Quality of events, mm hmm.
Instead of or as well as.
Um.
You're saying you're talking about downtown. Man, it wouldn't be the phrase.
Well, it could. It could be trail connectivity. It's the trail connectivity. To downtown, which also leads to the vibrant. Right. We had species talk that one through a lot. It's, it's just kind of oddly. It's oddly worded that you have to really kind of read between the lines or just keep reading until you get it, I guess. Bye, Felicia. Okay. Very good. Okay, number ten, identify those aspects. Of the town and give it the small town charm and retain them.
Well, that could definitely be under quality of events too, but it could go under a lot of.
Hopefully, yeah, one and two are the ones that really stand out.
Under strength.
Under strength, sorry.
Quality events of volunteer.
Opportunities. Three, beautification of neighborhoods through parks, including public art elements.
Yeah. Okay, let's categorize that under number three and opportunities.
Any other discussion on that? Uh, educate your residents about water and fire and its impact on sustainability in Parkdale.
Probably under our. Um. Opportunity, the second opportunity. Remote education in parks and focus on resources.
Yeah, I think that and isn't there something about sustainability somewhere? Maybe not, maybe that covers that.
I think what the one she pointed out, opportunities number two is the closest fit.
Mm hmm. Okay, everybody agree? Good, okay. Now, I have to. All, all the things. Um. So, was there anything that stuck out to you? And does, you can go through each one. If you want, or if you made any notes and you know right off the bat, something that you didn't include that should be included. Um. Speak now where I'm going through every one of these. Okay, so we have produce a map showing trails and future connectivity, put trails map on the website. Uh, trail connectivity, so that goes, that's covered under number one, right? On opportunities. Um, how do I want to do that? Hold on just a sec. This is gonna be a lot easier to do it.
And weaknesses for.
Right. Okay, so the first, so that one is. What did I just say? Opportunity. Number. Number four. And then number one. Okay. Uh, Sonoma Genie Park Project. That. That's right there. You got that one. Oh wait, I was looking at the wrong list. How about equitable access to parks and neighborhoods?
Yeah.
I think we have it under every.
Yeah.
Thing.
Yeah.
SWAT.
And I don't think we need to identify every single space that it goes. I don't know why I'm being like that. Um, okay, evaluate bike lanes for new construction of roadways.
Trails.
Yep. Uh, update the gazebo.
Beautification of neighborhoods through parks.
Mm hmm. Implement a park maintenance schedule.
Think that falls under limited resources, like staff? Public works availability to keep up on all that. Which is weaknesses, number one.
Honestly, um.
Beautification neighborhoods through parks.
Parks, including. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna say that maintenance is probably one of our. Uh, maintenance plan for our parks is one of the biggest elements that. We are missing to take care of our parks and um. We talked to Public Works about doing that. Uh, we just haven't had it happen. I, I honestly would like to see it.
Then why don't we strike number four, trails in Parkdale under weaknesses and put lack of, lack of comprehensive maintenance plan. Um, or, or lack of staff and maintenance or. Whatever it is, I mean, we have trails in here, like we said, over and over again. It's our number one opportunity to a new, I mean. Are we kind of using up a, a spot there? Why don't we, why don't we put in a maintenance plan? I mean, I. I'd agree with you that without having that kind of written down is what we need and what a multi-year plan would look like for maintenance.
Mm hmm.
Then we're always behind because this thing breaks and we don't have. We're not saying, hey.
We don't have to fix it.
This sprinkler system is amortized over fifteen years. We know we have to replace it in fifteen years. It's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars then, we should be.
Right, and not, not all of the maintenance plan involves. Parks and Rec a hundred percent. A lot of it is gonna be um. From public works and things like sprinkler systems and that kind of thing, but we need to have it. From, from both departments to keep that together. So I, I appreciate that. I, I mean, I don't have a problem with adding.
Grab six or whatever.
Well, we already have.
Or do you think we can make number one just more descriptive? So not just say limited resources, but maybe describe how or which resources are limited.
Uh, limited resources as in funding. And then add maintenance plan as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Add public work staff member to ensure park maintenance goals are met. So that kind of goes back up to that, to the maintenance plan. We want to add a. Oh, it's public work staff. Mm hmm. Continue working with developers to add parks and amenities to new developments. So we have that under threats, right? Feeling to have developers make improvements. Yeah?
Yeah.
Annually update or replace aging park infrastructure. Work toward establishing a five-year replacement plan. So that's a little different than the maintenance. But it can certainly fall under that, I, I would say, maintenance and. Replacement.
Going back to number eight, it says continue working with developers. Is that current practice? To have developers contribute to the parks and amenities?
Yes.
It is.
Yes.
Trying to think of what they, what they've been building out for.
So Crossroads. Crossroads had to build two parks.
Oh, that's right.
Um, Mountain Gate did trails. They built their own park. That's private, but they, but they do have trails that will be public. Um. Uh, the new development on, uh, behind the post office. The plateau, uh, they are contributing um. Funds to the Sonoma Genie Park in lieu of building their own, because it's just down the hill.
That's good, okay.
Probably might have forgotten to tell you about. We'll get to that when we get back to the Sonoma Genie conversation. Um, when we start that process again. Okay, any other conversation on that piece? So we have um, annual update. But, but um, Ben, let me just go back to that for a second because I do think. There are some internal um, processes that we need to put into place to be sure. That Parks and Rec is a part of those conversations early on. So I think we need to identify that when we get into the details of the plan. Um, I think we need to identify that, you know, that, that that's um.
Yeah, because I mean, I. Yeah, I've served on some of those other. Commissions and I don't, I just didn't remember that being a big element of saying like, hey, how's this? Hey, great, you're coming in and we're gonna move this through and how is this gonna affect kind of that? Whether it is public art or it's. Parks or trails or any of these, I just don't recall it being a big part of that discussion. So it'll be really good to. Get a foothold for Parks and Rec in a lot of those conversations.
Yes, there is a big opportunity for that. Um, to be more a part of that conversation earlier in the, because right now it's kind of community development. And um, and then it will go to planning and or design review and um. You know, it really should be, we should be at the table.
Early.
Early, first, first conversations of development. So I'm working on that.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so annual update. Oh, we already said that, five-year replacement plan. Uh, partner with other entities for events and programming. Specifically those that support the environment and sustainability as well as the arts.
Opportunities, number five. Or do you stick with the developers?
Mm hmm. Well, municipal funding, volunteers and shared services, community partnerships, perfect. Um. Any other conversation on that? Okay. Uh, continue to enhance services and amenities related to the Verde River. Bathrooms, wraps, dust control, parking.
Friends, number five.
Opportunities, number two. Uh, actively work on a plan to connect our neighborhoods through trails, sidewalks, pathways and bike lanes. So trail connectivity, yeah. The strategy for an arts incubator goal four.
Opportunities three.
Much as. Under gold for. Conduct analysis and study with the issue to develop an arts incubator and or pop-up shops in downtown. Number thirteen on goal four. I think is what that's alluding to. I don't know what our role in that is going to be. So I think number three under opportunities covers that, yes?
Yes.
Develop specific programming for each park.
And that could be S four, it could be. Opportunity.
Uh, weakness, number five, offer more classes.
That other sentence part of number five, or is it supposed to be number six, under weaknesses?
No.
Which one?
Under weaknesses. Is. Are there six or is that?
Oh, equitable access to parks and all neighborhoods. Yeah, I, I noticed that was on the list and I don't know. Is that just in number six?
Um, so. I think what they have is the current list, so you can add. Oh, we did have. So yeah, the last page.
Oh, wait. I'm sorry, let me interrupt you for a second. Number three says the same thing, so it's a repeat. It's a repeat. Yeah. Yeah, I think that's what happened. Okay. So we have programming covered. Now, we don't have it specific to each park, but I, I think we'll, we're okay there, yeah? Do you wanna make it specific to each park? Okay. Um, ensure all park amenities are listed on the website. Do we have promoting, promote educational stewardship opportunities in parks?
Yeah.
That's not stewardship opportunities, that's not. Amenities. Do you want it? Is it somewhere else or we could just add?
Public involvement, weaknesses, number two.
What? Any other discussion or comment on that page?
Go through it.
Anyone?
I thought I had one. More, but maybe I just could have. Oh, um, on area, goal area four, number two is continue operations of Verde River. So, we, I, we have that covered. Right? Verde River, the two.
Opportunities, number two. What does that fall to, under Verde River access points? When they say op- operations of the Verde River?
Yeah, now if you've got me. We have river education. Increase resources.
Operations makes me think of dealing with your kayak companies. That's. So I don't know if that just falls under Verde River access points.
Well, it could also be, um, river, yeah, river access point operations. So that's, um, ambassadors that are. Um, that are out there that includes, um.
Yeah, cause they're dealing with boat launches and amount of people out there, making sure the kayak companies are maintaining safety. So I just think that falls under access points, cause you. It's only being handled at the access points.
Yeah.
Once they're out there on the water, then.
Yes, agreed. Okay, well, that wraps it up.
As you went through these, did you identify anything that you thought maybe we should take another look at in our, from our SWOT analysis priorities? I mean, were there things that were like? Uh, now that we're looking at the strategic plan, they don't fit as well or? Or that we need to, you know, think about again? I mean, you're.
Well.
You're closer to a lot of this stuff than, than we are on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah.
Did anything jump out?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I appreciate you asking that. Um, there was something that stood out to me. But I can't remember.
Well, I, as we were going through these, I was kind of checking them off to see if you'd actually plug them in some places.
Mm-hmm, and what didn't get plugged in?
Like, where would we put letting growth approach on open space borders? I, I'm sure it could fit somewhere, but I don't still know.
My thought on that is like, that's in the, in the future, like that's a threat, like a potentially become an issue, but isn't necessarily included in this current strategic plan.
Right, this is a two-year strategic plan, so we have to remember that one possibly when we get, don't forget, we have. Just because everything here may not be in the strategic plan or vice versa, we have, um, the general plan to go through, yeah. So, um.
That's a, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
A more general plan.
Yes.
Correct.
Um. I think the, just under. I think. I don't have a problem with anything that's on here. I think it could be elaborated on a little, a little deeper. For instance, we have, under weaknesses, we have trails in Clarkdale. And, and then under. Opportunities, we have. Trail connectivity with maps. So I'm just wondering if there is a way to, but, you know, the fact is, you guys identified these as important, as the most important things. When you, um, when you came together. You know, I'm happy that, oh, I know what it was. It was staff access grant funding, accessed. Grant funding. I had a question about that. I knew there was something. And what, what was that? Does anybody remember under strengths, number three, staff access grant funding?
I, I remember including that as, if I don't know if I was my wording on that, but being a strength because of, as of late, there have been a handful of grants that were rewarded that haven't happened in. Very long time. So that's where I remember bringing up that concept as a strength. Okay, if that helps you out.
But maybe as a strength, it could be, uh, you know, projects in multiple areas. You know, unable to be funded by municipal funds, being grant-funded rather. From staff effort or something like that, from staff and volunteer effort. Is that what you're saying? Is like, some of these could say a little more, trails in Clarkdale is a weakness, could say disparate trails unconnected to a greater trail plan. Or, and, and in various states of disrepair is a weakness, right? Like that, like.
Something like that, or just the lack of, the fact that there are trail opportunities. Where is that one?
Trail connectivity.
Yeah, so it's under a weakness. What is the weakness? It just says trails in Clarkdale. So the weakness is. That we don't have enough, like you were just saying, you know, lack of connecting trails to. Uh, or, you know, but I mean, it doesn't have to be, or just lack of trails for. Or a variety of, or, you know, whatever. It's just, I don't.
I think you could put lack of, but then it still falls under opportunities because we know that that's moving forward in the near future.
Right, yeah, it's a little tricky when we're already working on some of these things and getting them forward to, to, um, to put them, to put them, but. But they, they will continue to be for some time, even though we're working on them. It's, you know, it's not an overnight process. It's gonna take years for us to get through a lot of these things. Beyond my years.
Well, a weakness would be. Opportunities also. I mean, if we have a weakness somewhere, we're.
Yes.
Opportunity for us to improve.
Yes, um, the trail connectivity. I, maybe I would like that to say trail connectivity and, um. Develop map, trail map development.
Maybe master plan, trail connectivity. You know, including maps and development plans. You know.
And under weaknesses, you're trying to rework?
No, opportunity. Number one. Say, can you say that one more time? No, you can't.
Master plan, trail connectivity, including maps and development plans. You know, and you can even put in there including possible access to the Greater Verde Valley Trail System, because that's. One of the big, both, both sides of the project, right? This is. And.
About a circle trail. Me specifically, immediately.
Where was the? Trail, it just says trails, master plan.
On SWOT analysis or in the goal areas?
I think it was on the SWOT analysis, but now I don't see it. I felt like we could elaborate. Trails in Clarkdale. One of the opportunities was to. Create a strategic, strategic plan to guide. Creation of a strategic plan. To guide, which we're working on, we're doing. It's gonna be a process too. So that's a good one. I just had to say it out loud. And, and I do like, um, the fact that we're adding in the main, the, um. Uh, maintenance plan, because I think that's one thing that, that probably was lacking here and not for any reason other than you, you weren't aware of the fact that we don't have that, most of you, so. Um, but it, it definitely, from our perspective, is an opportunity for, um, a big improvement. Yeah. That's it, unless you guys have anything else you wanna add about. That, good work. I really appreciate so much the work that you're doing on this. I know it's. We're, we're doing baby steps. When we come back next time, I want to, um, have, uh, we're, we're gonna kind of go through. Our plan for the process. We started that a while back and not all of you were, were involved in that conversation at the time. So just to kind of. Show you how we're gonna take, what, what the next steps are and how we're gonna take this to. An eventual end result, but it is gonna take us a long, it's gonna take us a while primarily because it, it's just a staff time thing. And we can, we can really only get you this far because of. The time it takes us to get this far each time, so. Um, anyway, but yeah.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Item number seven, future agenda items. Does anybody want to take this chance to request any? Trajant items? Anybody?
And keep, keep in mind that you can, if there's just something that we're having discussion on or even something that's in the reports. That you wanna have a bigger conversation about, those are the kind of things that you can move to the. Um, into an agenda item that you can, that we can have a greater, so I'm not saying that there's something there that you should do that. I'm just saying that's something for. For you to keep in mind that as you're looking at those reports. Um, that we're giving and I'm sorry, I usually give that to you ahead of time, so it takes a lot of care, but I tried to keep it for you, so. Uh, anyway, those are some of the things.
Anyone? No? Okay, no further items? Is there any objection to adjournments? Right, this meeting is adjourned at six twenty-eight P M.